We'll call the City Council's regular meeting to order for Monday, April 21st, 2025. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Gordis.
Here.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernatz.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda? Nick, Holly?
No.
Jake?
Steve?
None.
All right, seeing no changes to the agenda, we'd seek a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 5.1, under Announcements, is our Arbor Day proclamation. John?
Thank you, Mayor. On an annual basis, I think this is our 23rd year of being a Tree City USA. We declare an Arbor Day. This year's events will include tree planting at Disted Park, both parks and recreation, and our natural resource specialist has been very involved in getting ready for Arbor Day, and we're happy to make that declaration again this year.
All right, thank you, sir. I would seek a motion to proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Farmington, and the month of May, 2025, as Arbor Month in Farmington.
Motion.
Motion by Holly?
Second.
Second by Nick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll go through and read the proclamation then. Come on in.
Whereas the health and longevity of Minnesota's trees and forests are being affected by increased pressure from pests and diseases, changing temperature and precipitation, and other extreme weather events due to climate change, and...
Whereas Arbor Day provides people in Minnesota the opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees and forests to our economy, culture, history, and future of the state, and whereas Minnesota's forests are at risk from invasive species such as emerald ash borer that impact carbon short, carbon storage habitat and air and water quality, and...
Whereas trees are of great value as they provide clean air and water, shade and energy savings, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities, wood products, and jobs while capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere, thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, and...
Whereas trees that are resilient to pests, diseases, or the impacts of climate change can live longer thereby capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere and offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas properly planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees makes community forests more resilient by minimizing the impacts of diseases, insects, and other stressors such as climate change and providing long-term community and environmental benefits, and...
Whereas a healthy, resilient tree canopy decreases summertime temperatures in neighborhoods, enhances property values, improves air quality, and reduces stormwater runoff, and whereas thoughtfully choosing planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees now supports resilient communities into the future.
Now therefore, I, Joshua Hoyt, Mayor, on behalf of the Farmington City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day, and the month of May, 2025, as Arbor Month in Farmington. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Farmington, Minnesota, to be affixed on this 21st day of April, 2025.
Our next item under Announcements is 5.2, which is the Fair Housing Month proclamation. Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in 1968, the Fair Housing Act was enacted, and this is, this act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, sexual orientation, national origin, and disability, providing equal opportunity housing for all. And so, the month of April is considered Fair Housing Month, and we're asking for the City Council to consider passing the proclamation as such.
Thank you, ma'am. I would seek a motion to proclaim April, 2025, as Fair Housing Month.
Motion.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Nick?
Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and...
Whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities, and...
Whereas the city of Farmington is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and...
Whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities, and...
Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated, and... Whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense decency and fairness.
Now therefore, I, Joshua Hoyt, Mayor, on behalf of the Farmington City Council, do hereby proclaim the city of Farmington as an inclusive community, committed to fair housing and promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all by proclaiming April, 2025, as Fair Housing Month. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Farmington, Minnesota, to be affixed on this 21st day of April, 2025.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is Citizen Comments. If there's anyone in attendance wishing to speak, please come up and do so at this time. Citizen Comments is a time for anyone to address the City Council on matters not on the agenda. Those speaking shall limit their comments to five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. We will not engage in discussion on your topic, but those issues requiring a response will be responded to by the next City Council meeting. You may begin.
My name is Jeff Schotler. I live at 22420 Calico Court, Farmington, Minnesota. Not sure after the last meeting if I'm considered a Farmington resident. The way you talked about municipal boundaries in our, our neighborhood and things like that, and only being one, one resident on the lawsuits. So I'm not sure where we stand over there. You know, if, if I'm actually a resident, if I have the same value as the other residents. But it leaves into some of the, the humor in the first two topics today. The Fair Housing Act, it is discriminating against the people that you want to, against the outer edges of Farmington, what you consider the wasteland. You're taking away from us to give to others. That's kind of ironic that came up today. Arbor Day, didn't think to say anything about it, but y'all are talking about trees and making it Arbor Day. You just cut down half the trees in our neighborhood with no intent or plan to put them back, and you're stripping everything off that golf course. That's a little ironic. So, big day for you guys today. Congratulations with your win up at the Met Council. I hope everything that was said was absorbed and not just the approval to move forward. There's serious concern with residential impact, there's serious water concerns on the proposed Farmington Technology Park that need to be addressed and evaluated with longevity and redundancy in mind. To place something this large and this close to homes is obscene and irresponsible. Yes, you did. You managed to meet all of Met Council's requirements. You checked all the box. You, you get to do some work. Now, you have a ton of work, a ton of unanswered questions, a ton of concern, citizens, with real work to do. We've read thousands of emails between the city, Tract, back and forth, whomever, whomever it is. The first and foremost deal was close the deal, and then it was residential concern. Now that you've gotten your permission and you get to move forward, you guys can go to Tract, we've read these emails. There hasn't been a serious ask of them to come back and work with the residents. The land is there. Move your spaces that are unoccupied to your 40-foot allowable, whatever the allowable, I mean, see I set up the backs are. Give the people that live around it the other 210 feet, add it to them, ram it up to Highway 50, ram it up to the Vermillion River, ram it up to where people don't live, put it up next to the solar field that's going in. Keep it away from your residents. It's gonna help all of you in the long term, it'll help all of us. And that's what you're here to do, is to try and help everybody in the community, not just some. We've seen a lot of changes since this has all started a few year, a year ago. We've had a new council member resign, we got a new temp council member, we got a new city attorney, we got a revised comp plan, a few other important changes. It's time to ask Tract to change. Come back. Review, redesign their PUD. You've accommodated them, a ton. You've even let them build bigger buildings than they're supposed to be, you're giving them a ton of credit. You're working with them, not knowing what they're taking, not knowing what they're gonna use, but you're trying, you're accommodating it, because you want the business. I think everybody in the room understands that. You also wanna live in a neighborhood with a neighborhood environment, in a quality area like we do. The need for progression is there, you guys have done your work, you put a ton of work into it. Every place we go where we think we find a hidden gem to go talk to somebody, you guys have been there, your track has been there, you're doing your work. All of you are. We're talking to everybody we can, too. Not everybody says the same thing, some people have a different view. I think it can go there, but I think you need to work with the people a little better. I think we need a little more room. This is our, the two lawsuits, I'm confident they'll get dismissed. It was our first step. That was proactive. That was proactive. You're gonna force us to be reactive at some point if it's that close to our homes. Your names are on this, they're attached to it, that's forever, it's all over there. It's gonna be attached forever. Do something to make it so people can live here. Put some guarantees for when all their wells dry up, that Tract will help them out with it, or whoever the end user is. Do something that says that we're not gonna be cutting down the water in once a week, instead of once every other day. Do something that says you're gonna work with homeowners if the noise is, dang it, it's that loud, it's that bad that you can't stand it. Do some of that work now. I get you had to close a deal, you gotta make it happen, but it's, there's a lot more work to be done, and I have an obligation as a parent and a duty to my friends and my neighbors and my neighborhood to come here and talk every chance I can, and to every person that I can. I know I look like a lunatic, I sound like an idiot, you guys are sick of seeing me. I have that duty as a parent. We're not leaving there. I'm gonna sit here and weather out this storm and see what happens and see how bad it gets. I don't want to be reactive, trying to be proactive, I hope y'all can help all of us be proactive and continue to live in Farmington and be in Farmington residents, respecting and trusting your guidance and your directives. I'm gonna come in this week and ask, you said nobody can, we don't want city determining what happens with land and making rules and judgments for our land. I'm gonna come in this week, I'm gonna ask for a permit, second asphalt driveway in my yard, not gonna be issued it, I guarantee that. That's you saying what we can and can't do. You can tell Tract what they can and can't do, you do have the power. You can tell every person in the city what they can and can't do, you can tell them, too. We're residents, we live here. The Olsons don't even live here anymore. I get respecting their legacy and letting them move on and letting them retire, but you got a lot of other people that are still here, live a legacy, and not wanna retire and not wanna be Farmington residents. I plan on staying here when I retire. I don't plan on cashing out and moving out of town, so you'll hear from me forever until we get something that's decent. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Nate Ryan, Cambrian Way. Mayor and Council, I find it particularly interesting that, again, you guys don't even understand what you're doing. So you just did a proclamation for fair housing. In Minnesota, we have 11 protected classes, not seven. You only listed off seven. So you just said, the other protected classes in Minnesota, are they not protected in, in Farmington from fair housing? Receipt of public assistance, is that not a protected class that's here? And the reason that I'm bringing that up and being pointed about it is because you don't even understand what you did when you, as a council, trusted an attorney or trusted advisors to tell you what to say. You were literally just a puppet. You just read what people told you to say without realizing that there's other protected classes in the state of Minnesota. You were literally just a puppet. That's all you were. And the exact same thing was said when this rezoning came to place. You trusted people, you trusted people who made you a puppet, you trusted Deanna. Deanna went and got talking points for you. Ask Tract, get us talking points. From the very get-go, from the very beginning of this project, when it first came through, the only thing that I talked about and the only thing that I really say well today is the rezoning should have never happened. They told you it could. You believed them. The mayor brought talking points to each of you council members, you believed him because he was getting them from someone else. You're, you're putting a billion-dollar company and what they bring to the table over the rights of what your citizens have and want. That's what you're doing. You're choosing to rezone something. The mayor said, well, we can't, you don't want government telling what you can do with your property. The government isn't telling you, the Olsons, what they can do with their property. Government told the Olsons, or they came to government back in the early 2000s and said, hey, we would like to build homes on our property, that's what we would like, that is our exit plan, that's our retirement plan, is we wanna bring a developer, we wanna have them build homes there. They came to government, and government said, okay, yes, you, here, here, there's a plan. And then they decided that that wasn't the best option for them, or the market decided for them. Whoever decided, they had to come to government again, and government said, yes. Again. At the detriment of everyone else that grew up around them. Homes grew up around them. Families, kids, children, grew up around them, and government does not even take that "you" don't even take that in a, in a factor. You took an oath when you took this office. You took an oath not to protect a billion-dollar company. You took an oath to protect citizens, citizens of Farmington. You didn't take an oath to puppet, to be a puppet of what these people tell you to say. You took an oath to protect all of us, you took an oath to protect my family. You are not protecting my family. I can get into all of the legal things, right? I can get in and talk about legal strategy, and we can talk about all those things, but at the end of the day, your job is to protect the residents of Farmington, not a billion-dollar company from Colorado. And frankly, not a mom and pop that just wanna retire. What they do with their land is their choice. Protecting us from their choices is your job, and was your job, and you failed miserably. We look, when we back up, right? So I did, I had a call with Kristen, Kristen Dean, and I said, hey, come on, we're, you know, we're this far. Your response was, you're 1,200 feet away, you're not even gonna be impacted. How would she know that I'm not gonna be impacted? But yet, someone 250 feet is definitely gonna be impacted. Well, that 1,250 feet or that, that length or that far away, I mean, I'm gonna be impacted. We have property rights that say that, if, right now, we look at woods, I'm gonna be looking at a building that sits 25 feet above the top tree, the top line of the tree line. We have property rights, we have those rights. You should have protected those rights as elected officials, that's your job. It's what you get elected to do. And darn it, that's what you ran on, Jake. That's what you ran on, Mayor. You've made those oaths, and what's even crazier is, Mr. Mayor, you've made that oath more than once in your life. And you don't take it seriously? You don't care to protect Americans, you don't care to protect citizens of Farmington? But you sure as shit care about a billion-dollar company in Colorado, because they're gonna make you more tax dollars. If you really want to get behind this project, come with a proclamation that says, hey, when these two projects are done, because remember, we're not just getting one data center, we're getting two. We are going to lower taxes, if you live in a $500,000 house, we are a $250,000 house, whatever, most of them are 300 to 500 in Farmington, we're gonna lower taxes by $2,000. Right? Why can't you do that? You're not doing that. If you get that tax money, you're just gonna spend it. On what? Maybe we can get those fancy police gun, those cameras for their guns, every time they pull it out, there's a camera, they, I mean, the cops wanted them five, 10 years ago, maybe we can get those.
I'll have you wrap it up, your time's expired.
Government can tell me that my time's expired. Government can sit here and tell me that, but you can't defend me. You can sit here and say, your time's expired, sir. Sir, move on, because we care about you, we're gonna show you how much we care, we're gonna tell you to shut up. I brought my kids here tonight because I want them to see how you react. I want them to watch and see, and I want to show them exactly what a terrible council you all are, especially you, Mr. Mayor. You're not protecting them, you're not protecting my family. That's what government should do.
Your time, your time has expired, Nate.
That's what you should do, and you're not. And our only option is to wait out, just like I'm doing now, is to wait out so that we can get you through enough money in your lawsuit where the League of Minnesota City says, guys, we gotta do, we gotta white flag it up here. That's all we can do. That's terrible, it's absolutely terrible. That's, that's how you choose to, choose to serve the public. It's terrible. Except for Steve.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call. Seeing no more, we will move on to item 7, which is our consent agenda. I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Holly, second by Nick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 10.1, under Petitions, Requests, and Communications, is 10.1's Adopt Resolution 2025-TAC 029, approving the preliminary plat and preliminary planned unit development for Dakota Meadows. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, before you this evening is the preliminary planned unit development and preliminary plat for Dakota Meadows. Distinctive Land Development LLC is the applicant, and they are requesting review of the preliminary plat and preliminary planned unit development. The development is generally located towards the southeast intersection of Denmark Avenue and 220th Street West, and south, south of Dakota Electric and west of the Dakota County Fairgrounds. The proposed development is to consist of 134 single-family lots. The 134 lots are spread over 43 and a half acres, equates to a net density of 3.6 dwelling units per acre. Properties owned R2, low-medium density residential, and allows for a density range between 3.5 to 6 dwelling units per acre. Stormwater ponding is located mainly in the center of the development, with smaller ponds be located in the northeast and southwestern portions of the development. Wetland is located along the southern boundary of the site. The minimum lot area proposed with this development is 4,261 square feet, with the average lot area being 5,307 square feet. Minimum lot width is proposed at 40 feet. The minimum setbacks proposed, front yard, 20 feet, which is our standard, they are proposing 25 feet along sidewalk side of the street, rear yard setback of six, side yard interior of five feet, and side yard corner of 15 feet. The plat does contain five outlots, which are labeled A through E. Outlot A is a combination of stormwater facility and wetland, outlot B is a remnant parcel, outlot C, stormwater facility, outlot D is a remnant parcel, and outlot E is a combination of trail corridor and stormwater facility as well. And this is a overall site plan of the proposed plat. And then this is the preliminary plat itself, providing lot area and widths as well, so. There are four different building elevations that are being proposed with this development, the Barrett, Becker, Bisque, and Brookston. All of these would be basically slab-on-grade units. As far as access and transportation to this particular development, the access will come from Denmark Avenue. A secondary emergency access is to be provided towards the southern end of the development by the wetland area. This emergency access will consist of a 20-foot-wide enhanced trail section extending from Denmark Avenue all the way over to Street C on the east side of the development, and will have to be gated and closed to motorized vehicles. The Dakota County Plat Commission did review this, and they are fine with that additional emergency access. Three stubs are provided to adjacent properties, one to the CDA property to the north, one to the Murphy property to the south, and then one in the northeast corner of the site to the Turk property. All roads within the development are public, and will consist of a 6-foot right-of-way with a roadway width of 29 feet. Parks, trails, and sidewalks, sidewalks are provided on the south side of Street A and west side of Street C. Eight-foot-wide bituminous trails are provided along the northern boundary of the, the site, extending basically from Denmark Avenue up to Ash Street or 220th Street. And trail also extends from the Cul-de-sac Street B to the emergency access trail and along the right-of-way of Denmark Avenue. The city will be taking cash in lieu of park dedication with this plat. The park that would service this development is West View Acres Park, so a couple blocks north of this area, therefore making that trail connection to the north all that more critical and important. As far as the preliminary planned unit development, again, these tend to allow for flexibility to the R2 standards. The flexibility that is being requested with this one is reducing the minimum lot area to 4,261 square feet, reducing the minimum lot width to 40 feet, reducing the corner side yard, corner side yard setback to 15 feet, reducing the interior side yard to five feet, and increasing the building coverage percentage for lots up to 50%. The Plat Commission did review the preliminary plat and planned unit development on their April 8th regular meeting and held a public hearing regarding that. The Commission did recommend approval with a 4-0 vote of both the preliminary plat and planned unit development. Do want to note that there was some discussion on the trail, specifically the portion along the northern boundary of the site, between the developer and the planning commission, really dealing with whether or not they felt that trail was appropriate in that location. Because of that conversation, a second condition was added to the approval, that staff continued to work with the developer regarding the location of that trail along the northern boundary and have resolution regarding that trail prior to a final plat submittal. Do want to also note that the Park and Rec Commission will be reviewing that trail specifically at their May 14th regular meeting, so they will provide a, a recommendation on that to staff, so. Therefore, the action that's requested this evening is Adopt Resolution 2025-TAC 029, approving the Dakota Meadows preliminary plat and preliminary planned unit development, contingent upon the following. One, dissatisfaction of all engineering comments slash requirements, including construction plans for grading stormwater and utilities. And number two, staff continue to work with the developer regarding the location of the trail along the northern boundary and have resolution regarding it prior to submittal of final plat. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, sir. Steve, any questions?
I do. This is kinda more of a broader question comment. You know, we're seeing a trend, which I think is a reasonable trend, towards smaller lot sizes, Tony, and of course, 20-foot setback, I was quickly trying to pull out my own parcel, but I think I have a 25-foot setback. And, you know, we had a good discussion with John last week, so I just, you know, we start seeing these smaller lot developments. How much discussion are we kinda having either internally, or maybe this is kinda part of the whole thing? How much discussion are we kind of having either internally or maybe this is kind of part of the whole thing we're, we're talking through because there just isn't a lot of, you know, public right-of-way there and presumably most homeowners would want to plant a tree, probably some landscaping. And you've got a really small area to work with. So any thoughts on that in general?
Um, well, as far as the, the landscaping and things like that, right now, we don't allow for boulevard trees.
Correct.
We allow for lot frontage trees, which are typically eight feet from the property line and minimum eight feet, um, from the property line in. Um, I guess the bigger issue that you run into is with driveways, especially with these smaller lots when you're only going 40, 45 feet, 50 feet, you know, 20 feet of that's taken up by essentially driveway at a minimum usually. Um, it, it's something that we do consider. Um, because like John had mentioned at the work session, right-of-way is, it's shrinking. Um, all of these developments are, you know, and it is the trend that is out there. Um, so it is just something that we probably do need to look into and try to be more cognizant of as these move forward.
Well, and I don't, I don't think it's a problem unique to, is situation unique to Farmington. I mean, every community is, you know, the market demand, just from a pure cost standpoint, is for smaller homes. Um, so, you know, I guess, you know, it's, there's the public right, there's the utility right-of-way, which essentially is the discussion we had two weeks ago. Um, so. Yeah, I wish, I wish we could, I wish we had the ability to kind of say, you know, kind of controlling that a little bit, but utilities do have that right. Um, the other question I have though, which is more of a question comment for the developer. So on the eastern side there, we're pretty much abutting that, that, uh, train track. And is there, was there any discussion at the planning commission about possibly requiring any kind of decorative fencing along the back? I mean, because that's a, this is pretty close compared to a few other developments that we've looked at. Um, and even to the point of, is there going to be any kind of communication to potential buyers in that area that, you know, whether you're abutting the track or near the track that, you know, trains come by here a dozen times a day, they can be loud, they, you know, they might slow down in certain areas, blow whistle, you know, all the stuff that would be associated with trains. Um, I'm just kind of trying to think in advance of if the, obviously the developer is aware of that, but, you know, do they have any thoughts around that? Um, both communication and were the idea of, granted, would that cost, but do they have any thought about fencing of any type?
It was definitely brought up at the planning commission meeting. Um, being with some of the other developments we've had recently and the train activity and some of the complaints from noise and, you know, the fair hill one's a little different being that there's a siding track right there. But with this said, you have a crossing just north of this development where they're going to be blowing a horn right as they go literally by this development. Um, I think John is here. I don't know if he has any specific thoughts on, I know they're proposing some plantings along the backside there and things like that, but as far as fencing, I don't know that. That was fine.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson. I represent Distinctive, uh, Land Development and, uh, we did have discussion on that and did think through this process, you know, going back to last year when we were first doing concept plans and things like that. And what we looked at here on this site, uh, being an R2 zoning was it's, it's not your, you know, you can do single-family in this district, but it also allows for more density. Uh, this was previously rezoned from a higher density, which will allow for townhomes down to the R2 by the previous developer when they approved the original platte about three, four years ago. And we actually considered going back to a townhome and doing a mixture of some, uh, some of these single-family small lots with some townhomes. And what we ultimately decided upon, um, uh, with the builder was to do the small lot across the entire site to make it work this way. And we are looking at this as more of an alternative to say a townhome, attached townhome, I should say, versus competing with some of the single-family neighborhoods in the town, like, you know, Sapphire Lake or something like that. So, uh, we do have, um, you know, trees and landscaping going to go behind these homes adjacent to the railway. Uh, we're also going to be doing that along the north property line, which is kind of some of that discussion with that trail up in that area as well. Um, so yeah, we have considered that. Uh, we do look at, you know, from a buyer's standpoint, um, and Steve Bonner from Capstone Homes is here and he can maybe speak to this as well, but there would be some sort of disclosure for any buyer out there and, and items like, you know, the railroad or, you know, other things that come up with that nature. Um, so it depends on, you know, the situation and all that, but, uh, I don't know, Steve, if you want to talk, he has a couple of other neighborhoods where they're building the same product in other communities that also back up the railroad tracks. So they are very familiar with that situation, one being Cottage Grove, and I think the other one is Andover, so.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Bonner with Capstone Homes. And, uh, we've heard, uh, comments like the, the smaller lots, we've heard many times. We've built this product in, uh, about six cities right now. It's been received really well and we end up, um, building it in places where the zoning is higher. So it's typically, it is different than a single-family home that way. So we take advantage of the ability to get the density. And it's actually a, a nice alternative to attached townhomes. So that's the way that we look at it with the setbacks and the smaller lots. And affordability is the key. Um, when we were at the planning commission, I said Cottage Grove's a great example. We've done, um, we've, we did our first 150-unit community there. Now we're doing 180 more of them in a neighborhood called Mississippi Landing. And we're doing that right now. Um, and we actually have railroad tracks right on the backside in Cottage Grove as well. And just the key, the most important factor here is price point. So we do want to do the landscaping, um, that we talked about with John. We've previously looked at that. We want it to look nice. We just have to be very careful about building something that's, that adds expense. Cause this is, this is a price point. Um, the, these units will be anywhere, the, the single-family homes will be anywhere from about $375 to $435,000. And, um, and we just try to watch that carefully. But in Andover, we had the same situation, uh, where we back up to railroad tracks and we do the trees and try to do our best with that type of buffer.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate your comments, guys, especially the, uh, you know, having a, a buyer, you know, sign up, basically acknowledging the awareness. I think the property, I think the, um, the housing type is great. I have no concern about that. I find that attractive. It adds, uh, diversity and, uh, you know, can, um, yeah, so I like that part of it. But I do think if you're able to have a disclosure for the buyers, um, really if everybody, just based on the proximity, or certainly the folks that back into Street C, um, you know, because they may not notice it. Um, some may love having trains go by, others are like, holy cow, it's three in the morning. I can never sleep around here. Why did I buy this home? Um, but I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really nice neighborhood. I like what you're doing with it, but yeah, I would encourage, um, that type of document so that way the homeowner is at least aware of it.
We could do that.
Yep.
Jake?
Uh, my only question or comment was also relative to the railroad tracks, um, more from a safety perspective. Um, in the Andover development, have you heard of any concerns with, I'm raising a family and there's a railroad track right in my backyard. I mean, that's.
You know, we, we did not, we, that has been, we built that community a while back and we haven't had any, there was no feedback that, we haven't heard of anything that became an issue. And Cottage Grove, we're building it right now. Um, and so it's the landscape buffer that we're doing and trying to create something that, uh, makes it a little harder for, makes it a little bit safer.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Anything else?
That's it.
Holly?
Uh, my questions were actually asked and answered, so I'm good.
Nick?
I think it's actually really helpful that you guys kind of framed it as the context of as an alternative to a townhouse, given its previous kind of zoning. But to Steve's point, I guess my question would be like pound for pound in a housing situation like this versus a townhouse. Do you have the right-of-way concerns? Is it like comparable between the two models in terms of competition in those areas?
Uh, Mayor, city council members, uh, primarily from a tree standpoint, you're just reducing the amount of space you have for a tree, assuming that, you know, front footage that drainage and utilities may get used at some point in time for, you know, fiber or whatever else it is. So it's just reducing proportionally the amount of space you have to put a tree anywhere else on a lot.
Okay. Particularly in the front. The right-of-way is basically the same size either way.
Yep.
Okay. That's about the only thing I could think of on that one.
No other questions? Uh, real quick here. So I guess the question would be for Tony. Um, or even the developer can weigh in here. Is there, I see that there's a couple of stubs there for potential future access, right? To the south goes outside of limits, to the north falls into a couple of different potential opportunities over time. Um, is this, is the general thinking that this is phase one of more to come or is this kind of a one and done and the planned future streets are just stubbed into a general location based on what we think's going to happen?
Yeah, so I can talk to that. So of the 134 lots, we are looking to do that in three phases. So the first phase would be 42 lots, then the second and third phase would both be 46 lots. The stub to the north and to the south over on that, uh, eastern street, um, that would potentially create additional development opportunities for the city. Uh, both those parcels are currently within the township right now, so they would need to be annexed into the city. Um, I do know we have sewer depth issues the further south we go. I don't think we'll have a problem going to the north. And I think there's also, I believe utilities up on, uh, the, was it 220th or Ash, Ash Street or whatever up there. Um, but going to the south, I do know we've been, we were very careful. Um, where we stub into the north over into the, the townhouse site that's under construction right now, um, their temporary access that they have out to Denmark will go away, then their primary access will come through that entrance. And that's been planned since they went through with their design a couple of years ago. And, uh, so we picked the sewer and water up from that location and we, uh, run the, I think it's the, uh, minimum, um, uh, gravity or depth all the way out to that south property line. And I do know we have some ability to go further south there. I do know that property also has issues with wetlands, high water table, um, how to run that road through there and get that back out to Denmark Avenue at some point in time. So there's some things like that that would need to be addressed and, uh, dealt with. I have, that owner's, uh, Brian Murphy. I've talked to him numerous times over the course of the review over the last, you know, year or whatever. And so he's fully aware of what's going on and we've kept him up to speed and everything. So, so we have considered that. We have looked at that and it would potentially create some options for the future.
Okay, thank you. Tony, what's the, what's the street width?
Uh, it's a 60-foot wide right-of-way with a 29-foot roadway.
Do we have, like, when I look at this, I immediately think East Farmington Park Place. I think about the sidewalks that are, are sitting closer to the homes than the street. You see the reduction in the front yard setback. And all of a sudden you got, you got two vehicle width driveways. Ultimately, it, there's a lot of people that end up parking on the street. Right? Which is just not enough capacity. I know there's smaller homes, smaller footprints, so I mean, you start thinking, you know, 2.2 and a dog, right? Average house. There's, eventually there's going to be a third driver, right?
Right.
Are we, are we backing ourselves into like a logistical nightmare when it comes to the April or the November through April, no on-street parking? We've got these smaller driveways. Um, it, it, it just, it looks like a lot crammed into a tight space, right? And not having any, um, not having any flexibility when it comes to parking.
Right.
Right? Am I missing something here or?
Uh, well, it is a lot of units in a smaller area. Um, I do believe is this, would, would this be parking only on one side of the street? With a 29-foot.
Not the way it's proposed.
No.
Parking a lot on both sides.
Yeah.
So it.
Okay.
So, uh, just real quick to kind of talk about that real quick. So we're not actually reducing the front yard setbacks. Uh, we're actually enlarging them on one side of the streets from what the current zoning requirement is. And just to give an example, um, I also worked with that VitaTiva 55-plus community and they've got basically the same product as, as part of their development. And they also have the 20-foot front yard setback. So if you drive through that neighborhood and look at those units and where they got their trees and their driveways, it'll basically be the same as what you're going to see in this neighborhood, except for our lots with the sidewalk on that side of the street will actually be set back five extra feet. So, and that's to allow, so there's nobody overhanging onto the, uh, sidewalk with a car bumper or something like that. But we are meeting the front setback requirements and actually enlarging them, so. And they're, and each unit would have a two-car garage with the ability to park two more cars at least at a minimum in the driveway. So that's at least four parking spaces on every one of these lots. Some may have more, depending on the driveways.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Uh, with regard to East Farmington, I didn't recall that we had a disproportionate number of snowbirds during a real snow season that like this past year. Um, I confirmed that with the chief. He doesn't recall, you know, a disproportionate note, high number of snowbirds or vehicles parked in the roadway when we're trying to plow. Uh, the one issue in East Farmington that we still have time to avoid through careful placement of the trees is in East Farmington is where we have a lot of our concrete sidewalk heaving and, uh, replacement repair problems, most due to tree placement on the very narrow bou- boulevard. So taking work here in that regard can avoid what we have happening in East Farmington.
The other question slash comment that I wanted to propose here, um, I know we always under, we always go through and talk to public safety, right? Especially considering the ladder trucks and the length and the turnarounds and things. Um, when you look at what would be Street C, just having two dead ends and not having a common turnaround, unless I'm, again, unless I'm missing something based on the rendering here. Think about trash days, you think about snow removal, right? I mean, it's, it's one thing to look at in 2D when it's in concept and pre-planning phases, right? But when you think about six months after somebody's moved in, I mean, have we, have we considered alternatives to either the reduction of in a few of these key areas, pulling out an additional parcel to ensure that there's.
There are turnarounds at both of those. There's a, uh, if you look.
I see the bottom right, out, what would be Outlet B.
Yep, there's a half cul-de-sac that goes there and then on the northern end.
And that's permanent, not temporary, correct? Okay.
Correct. And then there's, uh, on the north end, there's a.
Turnaround.
Like an turnaround.
Yep, to the west side.
Yep.
Okay. And we, we feel that those are sufficient for actual real-life scenarios based on size. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Thank you. Uh, keeping in mind that when we, uh, have requirements for temporary cul-de-sacs, I do put that in air quotes because temporary becomes maybe 20 years temporary. So they have to meet the full turnaround requirements as if there's emergency vehicle in there or not. And keep in mind that that dark line across the south edge is that emergency access.
Right.
Uh, to that, that southeast corner. So we're still working through that and that will be a full emergency access, uh, 20-foot wide, uh, meaning all the weight requirements for fire vehicles.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. I don't have any other questions. Uh, with that, I would seek a motion to adopt resolution 2025 tag 09 approving the Dakota Meadows preliminary plat and planned unit development contingent upon the following. One, satisfaction of all engineering comments requirements, including construction plans for grading, stormwater and utilities. Number two, staff continue to work with the developer regarding the location of the trail along the northern boundary and have resolution regarding it prior to submittal of a final plat.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Holly?
Second.
Second by Jake. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnettz?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next item is 10-2, uh, which is the amendment to a planned unit development agreement for Meadowview Preserve. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Uh, state development, um, is requesting an amendment to the planned unit development agreement for Meadowview Preserve, uh, to increase allowable lot coverage to 40% of further single-family homes. Um, currently the requirement in the R1 low-density district, uh, is 30%. So currently the existing PUD agreement in place for Meadowview Preserve outlines two deviations, um, from the R1 zoning district that has reduced lot size. deviations, um, from the R1 zoning district that has reduced lot size to 8,119 square feet. This requirement is 10,000 square feet in the R1 and then reduce lot width to 60 feet. Um, this is usually 75 feet, um, in the R1 district. So the narrative for this, um, anticipated amendment, um, is that Summergate initially anticipated being the builder, um, but has ended up selling many of the lots to two home builders, Brandle Anderson and Pulte. These builders would like to offer multiple home types, um, not compete with each other. Um, and currently the 30% lot coverage, um, is working for traditional two-story homes that are starting to be built, um, out along Everfield Avenue, um, adjacent to the Troy Hill neighborhood. And then the 30% lot coverage is an issue for the villa-style homes being built by Brandle Anderson along Everglade Path, which is, um, the street to the west, um, adjacent to the open space. Um, these homes typically have a deeper footprint on a lot, therefore needing extra lot coverage. So I include an example survey of a home permit that the city has received from Brandle Anderson, um, and kind of what this would look like at a 40% max lot coverage. Um, so the lot line is outlined in the, in the black and with the house footprint outlined in red. Um, so the slot area is 8,125 square feet. And then when you add up the house area, the porch area and the deck, you're at around 3,240 square feet, um, giving it about 39.9% lot coverage. Um, you can see from this house, there's no upper level, so they accommodate for more of that square footage, um, throughout the footprint of the house, so it extends, um, a little bit deeper back on the lot. Um, there's still substantial, um, room there to meet setbacks, so that's still not a concern. Um, it's just specifically the lot coverage. Uh, the planning commission did hold a public hearing, um, at their April 8th meeting. Um, they did recommend denial on a three-to-one vote. They voiced concerns that developer was coming back, um, soon for amendment, um, that was approved back last year in January 2024. Um, and they also recalled previous meetings, um, back when this development was first proposed and kind of the neighborhood concerns and opposition, um, that was had in the multiple meetings that took place to get, um, to that initial planned unit development agreement. With that being said, staff is still recommending approval. The development already has approved reductions in lot si- or lot size and lot width, therefore an increase in lot coverage, you know, could be expected, um, when this occurs. It also is very unlikely at all lots we build to a maximum 40% lot coverage. Again, they're mostly having this issue along Everglade Path, um, with those lookout lots, um, not the, um, lots that are adjacent to the Troy Hill neighborhood. Um, and we are seeing a trend in, you know, single-family home developments that are, you know, coming with smaller lots while still trying to maintain, you know, a decent home size. And then that these PUDs are being utilized to allow these deviations, um, including lot coverage from traditional zoning codes. And we do have, um, several active, uh, single-family home developments in Farmington right now, uh, with PUD lot coverage deviations. Uh, Fair Hill Estate at North Creek, they have up to 50%, um, a deviation from 35%. Vita Tiva is up to 51%, it's a deviation from 35%. Uh, Whispering Fields is up to 35%, a deviation from 30%. And then the Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition, the single-family home portion, um, they're up to 45% with a deviation from 30%. So the action requested, uh, in front of city council is to consider one of the following two actions. Um, so one of the actions would be to deny the request, to deny, um, the amendment to the PUD agreement for Meadowview Preserve as per the planning commission's, uh, recommendation and direct staff to develop findings of fact for denial or approve Resolution 2025 028, um, amending the PUD agreement for Meadow Preserve per recommendation from staff.
Thank you, sir. Nick, any questions?
Don't start with me, I'm still thinking here.
All right. Holly?
Well, we get passes. Um, so, uh, thoughts and questions? My first thought obviously is that we, we are responding to market demand in these situations, that ultimately what's happening is individuals that are looking to purchase homes are asking for different things than what home builders had originally thought might be of interest as that a fair assessment.
Mm-hmm.
So when we're talking about the increase to 40%, and then we're also talking about the fact that this is likely really only going to affect, um, non-two-story product, does it give pass in permission to the two-story developer to then also increase the footprint of their home because we're talking about that 40%? If we're just looking at, you know, visual metrics here...
Absolutely.
Lower-lying homes, um, you're not gonna necessarily notice as much, right? But when we're, when we're going up a couple stories, my expectation is that any home that's being produced on those lots is then gonna be able to go up.
Correct.
Fair?
Right, yep.
Okay. And is there anything from the builders that is indicative that that's a, a change that they're looking to make on, on two-story homes or not?
Um, not that we've seen. Um, it's only been, uh, Brandle Anderson on the, uh, west side. I can certainly, would like to comment on that too, or a representative from Summergate and the builders too could comment on that as well.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, so I also do work with, uh, Brandle Anderson Homes and have had a lot of conversations with Summergate Development. Uh, Brian Tucker, who was here at the planning commission, was in another meeting, a different community night. And Casey Willshogger from Summergate was gonna be here, but he got pretty sick and was not able to attend. So, uh, Tony and I have talked a couple times as well, and I know Chris Contreras from Brandle Anderson Homes is here also. And just to go back in history a little bit, and I know Tony was here at the time, this gotta be about 15 years ago, kind of post-recession, there was a development called Hometown up back, u- used to Highway 3, turning homes bought like 25 lots in there. And every house they went in there was needing a variance for the lot coverage, just he couldn't make it work. And at that time, uh, there was a discussion, and that was zoned, I believe, R2. They raised some of the lot coverages to kind of fix that problem and it's worked out ever since. And as you go into the project and you look at, say, R1 versus R2, there's different lot coverage because the differences are the lot, you know, lot size in R1 are supposed to be bigger than in R2. And in, in this case, uh, the property is zoned R1, they did the planned unit development, went through, did all negotiations, I was not part of that, so I don't know specifics. But the basic background is, is now that we got there, you know, the Pulte is doing the two-story homes on the kind of the east side, Brandle Anderson's gonna do the villas, or I should say the one-level homes on the west side. And th- they didn't want to compete against other being two, uh, builders in the same development. Well, as we started looking at it, the, the 30% coverage doesn't work for a one-level home at basically at all, because typically one-level homes have a bigger footprint than a two-story, because they have the ability to put, you know, square footage on the upper floor. And one thing, and this is my opinion, I don't know for sure, but, you know, I've done a few developments in Farmington over the years and, you know, the Vita Tiva and tonight the Dakota Meadows site we talked about. And when we apply for the PUD based on that specific product, you gotta look at, where do we need the reductions or the increases in, you know, through the PUD? And one thing that always happens is we increase, as the lots get smaller, you need to increase the lot coverage on the lot to make them work. In this case is, uh, with the, um, Meadowview Preserve development, the lots got smaller to be more like an R2 development, but yet we're still using the R1 lot coverage when in reality you're really restricting what you can build on some of these lots to basically two-story homes. And I think it's something that probably just got missed in the initial review, the initial approval. And now that we're coming back and we're starting to actually put, you know, you know, houses on the ground and realizing this, that we're starting to come across it. Not every lot has this issue, because there are some that are bigger than others, but some of these smaller lots are having that. And so what we're just looking here is just to be able to do that product that, you know, that was up on the screen. And, um, you know, we're not actually doing this product on the east side. That's where, you know, Pulte Homes will be. It's gonna be further on the west, adjacent to the, the, the creek or whatever, the floodplain area kind of on the west side of this site. So, you know, there is a reason why as you get a smaller lot, the increase goes up on the lot coverage and there is some history to it in Farmington. I also know I work in some neighboring communities in like Lakeville and Rosemont and stuff and, you know, Empire, and I've done projects in all those communities over the last few years. And in Lakeville's case, they don't really even have a lot coverage requirement for the structure like this, so it doesn't even become an issue. Other communities like Empire, the site that we approved there that's under construction right now, they also did some, uh, similar PUD stuff, more based on met council requirements. But in that case, because they were reducing some lot sizes, they also increased their lot coverage and in some cases up to 50%. So, um, it's very common to do that. And when your lots do get smaller, uh, reality is these lots are more like an R2 lot than an R1 based on the sizes of them. So you need to look at also your, you know, your setbacks, your requirements, your lot coverages to go along with that. And, and what Summergate is asking for, for Brandle Anderson Homes is just to reduce, you know, or increase, I should say, the lot coverage for those lots to allow for some additional, you know, styles. I also know there's, you know, home buyers that have already, you know, signed pert agreements and are ready to go on some of these houses, but right now they're on hold. And, uh, you know, we definitely, you know, wanna make sure those people can be happy and get them their house, so. And if you have more questions about the, the specific product for Brandle Anderson, Chris could probably address that on specifics on the house more than I could, but, yeah.
I don't have anything else right now. I'll probably think of something, but...
Nick? I mean, the reason I'm kind of mulling in my head is I, I don't think I can, you know, have the discussion we just had about the previous topic when we reduced the, the lot coverage thing and then say the same thing here, right? So, um, you know, you ask yourself the question of, why do we have lot coverage requirements? And it's generally probably something like, uh, a belief of what we think makes a desirable lot, right? Well, if the market's telling you that they want these lots that are, you know, they're selling, then that, that is the market that is desirable, right? So, uh, I don't think I have a ton of concern in terms of, you know, just changing the lot coverage to make it fit, to make it work, to make it fit the market. Um, like I said, diversified house mix never hurts. What I'm really hanging up on is my planning commission has recommended denial to me, which to me reduces this to, you know, why do they deny it? And do I see just cause to go above and beyond what they've said or, or supersede what they've, they've recommended to me? And that kind of falls down into the, you know, this change of plans and how many times we've, we've been here for this kind of same area of land. And I think this is the third or fourth time we've been through this on, on a change in plans. And so I guess if we go back, I mean, to Great Oaks is the one that's really stuck in my head. And we basically denied that on the premise that we didn't want to be changing plans that much. We wanted to know what was in front of us, what our five-year plan was. And if we say we have a five-year plan for it, that's what we wanna stick to. And it seems like that's what the planning commission is, is raising here, is why are we changing so much and how do we resolve that? So I guess, I don't know if you have any thoughts or if, on that topic of, of whether you see that calming down, whether you see, you know, this is the last change and we're good to go, you know? Any thoughts in that area?
Sure. Just as an immediate thought, I don't, I wouldn't foresee any more specific zoning deviations to those bulk requirements happening, um, from the houses that have been submitted so far. Um, besides a couple of these Brandle Anderson Homes that have been submitted, have met the zoning, uh, requirements, um, perfectly fine or well within, uh, those requirements. So we are not running up into any other possible changes that I foresee. That doesn't mean that, you know, further down the line that something could come up, but that hasn't happened besides the lot coverage as they've started building homes.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Jake?
Um, when I, I watched this portion of the planning commission meeting, um, and at first I shared the concern that we're making this, this change so soon after this was initially approved, but there were three items that jumped out at me that night, and two of them you touched on, Jared, in your presentation, the first being, uh, the conversation that this really will be only a few lots. It potentially won't be the entire development. Um, you also touched on the fact that this 40% coverage area falls roughly in line with a few other recent developments. I think the one item that stuck out to me watching that meeting that you haven't touched on yet was the water infrastructure. I think it was mentioned at the planning commission meeting that the infrastructure was designed for 40% coverage. Is that correct?
Sure. So the, the building pads that submitted through the preliminary plat, um, I know in the packet two, there's two differentiations between the two-story and then the, um, the villa home. But the building pads usually set up for what they, you know, account for stormwater, um, usually have exceeded the 40% of the, so they consider that entire pad being built out. So we don't foresee any stormwater, um, issues with that.
Yeah, after hearing those three items, I, I'm more inclined to support this amendment at this time.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I have zero concerns about this. I mean, with regard to the planning commission, I mean, I think they've actually seen this a few more times than we have. If you rewind a couple of years ago, um, a- and I would agree with the, the perspective at that time. I think Summergate was maybe feeling a little bit uncomfortable about just the whole area being R1, kind of wanted to change its scope. I mean, I think we've gotten to the point today where, um, we're gonna have a diversity of housing mix, it's gonna meet consumers where they're at. Um, the two builders listed here are, are builders that have a very high reputation for quality homes. I think it's gonna be really easy to, to sell those. I'm really, uh, you know, I just think it's a very attractive development and, you know, the planning commission, I appreciate, um, their review of it. I have a different opinion than where they came to. I did want to acknowledge too, because it was in our packet, there is a resident, um, in this area that has concerns about the project and I respect the fact that she wrote to us to express those concerns, very articulate, very articulately, I might add. Um, and, um, you know, obviously her, her backyard, the backyard of the folks that have lived there for a while is gonna look a little bit different. Um, but obviously this is an area that's been zoned, well, it did start off as R1 for a while, um, but is now changing a little bit. But, um, I like the, I like this development and like what's going on here, so. That's all I have.
Tony, I'm gonna lean on you a little bit here for some dates to make sure I got this right. So if I recall, it was the, was it late summer, early fall of '23 when the preliminary plat came forward for Summergate?
Yes, sir.
Was approved, looked more in line with what phase one is.
Correct.
Didn't start building, came to us late '23, early '24, like November into January, saying market conditions have changed, we need to reduce the lot size, right? Ultimately, we said no.
Correct.
Right? There was some traffic concerns. There was traffic on 190th going into Pilot Knob, there was traffic concerns on a right-in, right-out on 195th.
Correct.
Close proximity to the school, all the things. We said, "The density at the time didn't work because of the location." The density could work as other areas are built out throughway of 190th to Flagstaff. And ultimately, they took the denial and they went back and they found a way to make the initial proposal viable again.
Correct.
Which it came back to us through the planning commission and ultimately got approved.
Yes, sir.
And to Nick's point, we're not even through phase one yet and we're already wanting to change it. That's, that's my primary concern. It's not about the builders, it's not about the, the fitment, the diversity of the housing mix. It's eerily reminiscent of what we went through with another group.
Sure.
That's the part that I, we don't have a Summergate representative here, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion, well, let me back up. Is there any other motions on the table to either approve or deny as presented?
I will make a motion to approve.
Oh, second.
So there's a motion to approve by Steve, a second by Jake. Call the roll.
Mayor Hoyt?
No.
Councilmember Burnettz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
No.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
There you go. We'll move on to item 12-1 under new business, which is repeal of Title VII, Chapter III of the Farmington City Code titled "Design, Installation, and Maintenance of On-Site Individual Sewage Treatment Systems." Josh?
Good evening, Mayor Hoyt and council members. I do not have a fancy display as we're talking about septic systems, but today I'm here to to formally recommend, um, the adoption of ordinance 2025-01, which if adopted will repeal Title VII, Chapter Three of the Farmington City Code as it relates to subsurface sewage treatment systems. Um, if adopted, future administration permitting inspections of both current and future systems will be performed by Dakota County. A little background on the subject, Farmington voluntarily adopted a subsurface treatment system in the early nineties and currently we have 81 dwelling units that are served by septic systems and 12 other undefined systems. Over the past five years, we've installed just one system, new system in the city of Farmington. So the numbers have reduced quite a bit in recent years. Owners of properties that are served by septic systems, the city issues them a $30 maintenance permit, which is good for three years. And we issue that permit once they provide pumping records and inspection results showing that their septic tank is watertight. To date, um, after taking the position as building official, I looked at our systems, where we were at, to date, less than 10% of all of our septic systems appear to be in compliance. That number could be erroneous. Um, so they either have failed to provide current pumping records, which results in numerous mailings and, and staff sending out numerous notifications of non-compliance, which like I said, are oftentimes inaccurate. The reason they're inaccurate is that the issuance of maintenance permits and mailings to ensure compliance is a process that's already done and duplicated by Dakota County. So all cities and townships in Dakota County pay a monthly fee. Um, the fee is to maintain a pumping database through Dakota County. That database tracks the pumping records and send out, sends out automatic notices to residents when their systems are due for maintenance. In accordance with Minnesota Rules 780, 781, the county must adopt and implement a subsurface sewage treatment system ordinance, which they have done. It's ordinance 113. The county with SSTs ordinances must permit and inspect septic systems within cities and townships that do not administer an ordinance, septic ordinance. So having that in mind, in April of this year, actually April of last year, I began working with Emily Gable with Dakota County. We talked about the necessary steps to repeal our current septic system by default, turning it back over to Dakota County. Part of that process is providing Dakota County with six months written notification, which was done. Dakota County was also provided with all permits, pumping records, as-built, septic designs, and drawings for all of the city's systems. We've got a shared folder that we've been working closely with Dakota County with that. If adopted, the building inspection department will still continue to work very closely with Dakota County when new building permits, applications necessitate the need for a certificate of compliance. Those scenarios may include the expansion of a building served by a septic system, such as in addition to your home, additional bedrooms, bathrooms, or if there's a change in the use of the property that increases the demand on the system. Also, the city of Farmington will continue to review all new building permits for new structures based on the location and distance to available city services, and they will first be examined to decide whether or not they can first be served by city sewer and water services. Uh, when I look at budget impacts, I don't see any impacts to our budget right now. We just budget only $600 annually to actually inspect those systems. So we have a private contract inspector that we pay $250 to perform those inspections. I looked at the impacts to the citizens as well. Dakota County charges $421 for a new septic system for a type one trench. The city in Farmington charges currently right now $350 plus a $30 maintenance fee every three years. So the costs are but a wash. The action requested tonight is to adopt ordinance 2025-01, deleting Title VII, Chapter Three of the Farmington City Code. If adopted, the future administration permitting inspections of current and future systems will be defaulted to Dakota County. With that, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Jake?
I have no questions. I think Dakota County is offering this service and it sounds like they're sending out duplicative, uh, communications at the same time the city is. It seems like a no-brainer to me. It's smart government.
Part of the duplicity is what sparked this because we struggled to get compliance with people sending in their pumping records and obtaining maintenance permits when they feel they've already done that by providing those to the county and the pumping authority. So.
Steve? I'm good. Sorry.
Nope. I was done.
Holly?
Work smarter, not harder. I have no questions.
Nick?
I am just deeply disappointed in the lack of hilarious pictures you could have included. I personally had Christmas Vacation in my head. Maybe not counsel appropriate though. No, no questions. Great work.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd seek a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-TAG01, amending Title VII of the Farmington City Code as it relates to subsurface sewage treatment systems, deleting it in its entirety.
Motion.
Second.
My Nick, second by Holly. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cordis?
Yes.
Mayor Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right. Roundtable time.
You have to move your mic.
Okay. So the light is on. That means I can talk into it and be heard, right?
You're good.
One of these days I'll figure this out. First, apologies for being a few minutes late today. Traffic was not my friend. Um, and I don't really have a report other than to say that, you know, um, before the next, before we're back here again for your next meeting, we will be passing my favorite holiday, which is, uh, the first Saturday in May, Kentucky Derby Day. So happy Kentucky Derby Day to all who celebrate.
I challenge you to wear your Kentucky Derby hat to the next meeting.
Oh, Mayor, that is a gauntlet you don't want to throw down. I just got a new one for this year.
They all want to see it. There you go. Nick?
An expectation has been set there. It's warm out. I guess my, my children are all terrorizing neighborhoods on their bikes, so please be mindful, um, flying balls, flying kids, whatever, all that stuff, watch out for it. Be safe. Enjoy the weather.
Holly?
Uh, I said it last time I was here, I'll say it again. Guys and Dolls opens Thursday night. Uh, free senior preview is tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow at 4:00 PM. So if you are a senior in Farmington or run of these surrounding communities, uh, you can go experience live theater at no cost. Uh, I know that it's probably been a long time since most of you were afraid of being carded, but don't worry, we will not card, um, going in the opposite direction. And, uh, hopefully for those that are interested in exploring the arts or, um, engaging their families with it, it's, it's a good chance to go out and see, see some local talent. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Jake?
I'm going to echo Holly's comments tonight. Uh, go see the musical. I know there are quite a few tickets left, um, available and personally I've never been to Broadway, but, so take this comment with a grain of salt, but last year's performance of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat was better than Broadway. Um, so I'm sure Guys and Dolls will be better than Broadway this year. So if you're available, I, six, seven, eight showings, I'm not 100% sure.
Seven showings, um, plus the senior preview. Starts on Thursday night, Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this week at 7:00 PM. Sunday matinee is at 3:00. And then next week, Thursday, Friday, 7:00 PM and Saturday matinee at 3:00.
There you go. No excuse not to go. It's a, it'll be a fun date night, I'm sure.
Holly, what is the definition of senior?
That's why I said, we're not going to card you. If you feel senior-esque, you can be a senior in this situation. I would say if, if you qualify to be able to go to Rambling River Center, we're going to let you in.
That's 50 and over.
Yeah. And if you eat dinner at 4:00 PM, you're absolutely allowed to go.
I did do that today. And I too am going to the show. I might go more than one time. Um, and that's all I have.
Nothing tonight.
Shirley?
I don't have anything.
David?
We've got two things for you tonight. So, uh, first, in addition to the various appointments you made tonight, we are actively in the hiring process for numerous seasonal and full-time positions. One of those is the front desk that I mentioned before. I did have the opportunity to make a contention offer to a highly qualified individual today. Uh, but what I really wanted to point out with that position is we had 109 applications for that position, which I think is just a further testament to the city as a highly desirable organization and community. The second thing is, at your last meeting, you approved an RFP for health insurance broker services. Those responses are due this Friday, um, but tonight you also approved staff signing on to an RFP for private carriers for paid family medical leave, PFML, plans. Um, that's something that I just wanted to get on your radar that we will be discussing probably later this summer, especially as we go into budget. Uh, that's legislation that was originally passed in 2023, goes into effect January 1, 2026. That mandate is going to have a financial impact on the city and our employees. So we just want to make sure that we are fully informed of all the different options so we are making the best decision again for the, the city and our employees. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight at the EDA meeting, we had one of our partner organizations come and present to the EDA. The partner organization was Open to Business, which is a service that we are part of a contract with Dakota County and other Dakota County communities to be able to provide free of charge to our businesses, business counseling service, um, services for businesses anywhere along the spectrum from startup ideation, all the way through businesses that have been in operation for years and just have some level of, of need. And this is, um, we're happy to bring these partners in because economic development cannot happen in a vacuum and we leverage these relationships that we have. And the reason we do that is to better our community and to make sure that we have a variety of services available for, for all of our businesses, as well as businesses that want to be part of this community. So I was super excited to be able to continue to bring our partners to our EDA meetings. Um, we will continue to do that this year and have the opportunity for the EDA to engage with these partners, to learn a little bit more about what it is that they offer, to understand that relationship that we have as your staff that's carrying out these various different initiatives and ideas, um, and to really have an opportunity to have that dialogue. So tonight it was Open to Business. Natalie is our business consultant. I think she does a fabulous job for us and we will continue to highlight those partners because they really are instrumental in us continuing to help our businesses grow. So I just wanted to highlight that and thank everybody for the dialogue and conversation that you had.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Just a reminder to residents that we're in the process of doing our spring hydrant flushing. Uh, we expect to finish by Wednesday with the exception of the area near the high school. We defer that until school's out. That'll be June 9th. So if you have, uh, noticed discolored water, a different smell, we have information on the city website, uh, recommendations on what to do if you encounter that. It's not unusual when we're doing hydrant flushing to have discoloration in the water.
Thank you.
Life tip there, don't accuse your children of not flushing the toilet on hydrant flushing day.
Second life tip, keep the lid closed on those toilets also.
Not wrong.
I don't know if I can follow that. No, just a reminder that May 3rd is the Rambling River Center Arts and Crafts Fair at the Schmitz Mack Arena, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So please come out and support, uh, the Rambling River Center. Uh, progress on the center continues. Uh, their painting windows are going to be, uh, installed starting tomorrow, uh, their tiling, their flooring. So we're starting to see the finish line. I promised Matt we're going to get there soon. Um, we'll be back in the center. It's, it's really exciting. I know the seniors are ready to, to move back home. And then also Saturday, May 3rd is also Pond and Park Cleanup Day. I know some, uh, groups have already cleaned. I know one was cleaning tonight. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank all the individuals, families, businesses, and organizations who have adopted our city parks. Every single one of our city parks is currently adopted and we have a couple of people who are on a waitlist to get a park. So without you, we couldn't keep our parks, uh, looking as good as they do. So thank you very much to those, uh, individuals, groups, families, et cetera.
Do we have a substantial completion date yet for the Rambling River Center?
They're saying May 15th.
Okay. Beautiful. It's right around the corner.
Yep, right around the corner.
I like it. Chief?
I really don't have anything tonight. Uh, I guess if I have to come up with something, next Monday, Tuesday, we interview for our pay-down calls. Um, I just went over the list and we have 24, so.
Nice. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Yes. Um, I struggled with whether or not I wanted to bring this up, but then this is going to be a little bit of preaching to the choir, I think. Uh, because what I'm about to say, I think everybody in the room already knows. Uh, Tuesday morning, this past Tuesday morning, we had a pretty ugly attempted homicide, uh, here in Farmington. It's not something that we see a lot of here, obviously. It's a very safe community. It arose out of a domestic incident. Um, I bring it up just to point out the fantastic work by your police and fire personnel in quickly getting to the scene, getting the suspect in custody, um, securing the scene, locating the victim, getting fire, and to start providing, uh, lifesaving aid. Um, and it was something that just brings me the most pride to know that I work with some of the greatest men and women on the face of the planet.
I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up too. Um, because it is, it's, um, I don't know how it came up in context the other day, but I was having a conversation with somebody and it, I've used the phrase like it, everything's good until it's not and everything works until it doesn't, right? We sometimes take for granted that the community is as safe as it is. We don't have a lot of violent crime. We don't have a lot of transient crime. We don't knock on wood have a lot of the things, right? But there is still a certain level of readiness that must always be maintained because that call comes in and we, our men and women have to respond immediately. And it's just, it's a stark reminder of how short life is because people have neighbors and everything seems fine. And then one day there's the thing that happens and everyone's just shocked from it. Um, I mean, that one happened 600 feet, 700 feet from a house. I wouldn't even know it, right? But it just, it, it, we all too often forget the luxury that we have living in a first-world country and having public safety and running water and all of the things at our disposal. And then when all of a sudden something changes, something bad happens, we have to flash back for a second and, and just remember the world that we actually live in. And that world is protected by men and women with guns and those fires are put out by men and women with a lot of specialty equipment, um, which is a little bit of a segue here. Not intentional because I had no idea the chief was going to talk about that, but this is a natural segue. My State of the City got postponed. Uh, I've elected to push it back to Friday, um, May 23rd. We've pushed it back about 30 days. Um, and part of that was because we've been working on, there's a plethora of stuff going on. Obviously we have, we have two lawsuits that are currently in place. We have the Met Council looking over some comprehensive plan amendments. We have a significant retirement and a successor that needs to be placed. And I, I feel like there needs to be a little bit more clarity on a few of these things before I present my State of the City. But on that note, there's a lot of, there's a lot of financial commitments that this city has to make. We often hear the, our taxes are so high, our taxes are so high. Well, at the same time, what we're really saying is we don't have enough revenue. We don't have enough of the right revenue coming from the right places to ensure that we have healthy, balanced coffers to look over the decades to come. You either change that by increasing your rates and increasing your taxes, or you do it by expanding and taking on new tax capacity and, and new growth. And that's not always the most comfortable thing. We've been banging that drum and beating that sentiment, um, pretty heavily since I've been in office about the need to make sure that our equipment is upgraded and our roads are maintained and replaced in proper industry standard intervals. And that hasn't happened. We've been digging ourselves out of too big of a hole. We need to make some changes, some pretty significant changes. And part of that comes off of the heels of growth. And yes, this council, all five of us, have provided clear direction to our team to go out and execute on that mission. That is move the needle. By any and every means possible, bring them to us, let us talk about it, let us decide what's ultimately a good fit for this community, and then make a decision on how we're going to move forward. We got elected to take this role and make those decisions on the, on the, on behalf of the community as a whole. There's things that we've been silent about that we haven't commented on, and that is 100% intentional because it doesn't matter what someone says, it'll be twisted and turned and flipped around into a narrative that sounds really good inside of a small group or an echo chamber. And we've heard that yet again tonight. We have to continue to push forward. We have to make really hard decisions because the alternative doesn't work. We are not going to talk about cutting services such as public safety. doesn't work. We are not going to talk about cutting services such as public safety, cutting our teams to the point where they can no longer deliver a minimum acceptable level of standard for performance. There's going to be some hard conversations that we've, there's hard conversations that we've already started and more that will continue, up into including taking some services offline. It's just part of the math equation that currently doesn't work absent the growth that this community has begged for. And frankly, there's not a long list of people that are standing there advocating on behalf of things like data centers, because they've seen and we've heard the behavior and how we've been treated publicly. But we signed up for this. Every one of us raised our hand and swore an oath to defend and do the things that this community needs. That's not always pleasant. But I don't, I don't blame anybody for not coming in here and sending the email, calling us and telling us what they really want. We need growth, bad, desperately. We need growth. Because without it, it, there is no future. It is very bleak. And so in about 30 days, we'll go through and talk a lot more about it, and there's going to be a, a moment of reality that hits a lot of people, and I hope they're paying attention, because this thing's been brewing for quite some time, and we, we finally hit that crossroads. So with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at 8:30.
Motion by Jake?
Second.
Second by Holly. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned at 8:30.